It's two.
Roll call.
Palermo. Festerson. Gray. Harding. Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for remarks by Councilmember Pete Festerson of District One.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
So I wanted to note two things today. I first wanted to note the tragic passing of Kobe Bryant and his daughter and all those involved in the tragic accident and the helicopter crash this week. I think that's touched people's lives all across the country and all across the world and certainly here in Omaha too. And our hearts go out to his family and also the people of Los Angeles. Secondly, this is the first meeting we've had since Martin Luther King Day. So I wanted to recognize, of course, Martin Luther King's legacy and the importance of that and living the dream, as you would say. And thank all those in Omaha that helped with ceremonies that day to recognize that message. A few that I went to included an event by Together Inc. and Partnership for Kids, the Ministerial Alliance for sure. And then the City of Omaha's Human Rights and Relations Department put on a really great event for high school students across the entire city that we're going to recognize here in a minute. And Mr. President, if I may, I'll just kind of go ahead and tee that up before we bring down Mr. Thompson and Mr. Lee, the Principal of Northwest High School. It was really impressive event. The kids gave presentations to communicate their message about Martin Luther King through various means, whether it was poetry or dance or song or instrumentation. All very impressive messages and really heartfelt thoughts from our youth, which is so important on that issue. We had kids from Northwest High School, Central High School, North and South High School, Blackburn, Millard North and Westside, all participating. So a really great sampling of the city. And I want to thank Mr. Thompson for all his work on it. I know it was a very labor-intensive event we do every week, but definitely worth it. And I definitely look forward to presenting some awards here in a minute with Mr. Thompson's leadership. And lastly, I'll say that the most impressive thing for me was to see the kids support each other. That was really the neatest thing all night long was to see them supporting all of their own performances and all their own work in this area. So I think for me, well worth it in terms of being a judge that night and well worth it in terms of the city's resources to promote it and to continue it next year, I hope. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Okay, Dr. Thompson from Human Rights and Relations Department Director, if you'd come down and with Councilmember Festerson, recognized for awards.
If I could have Dr. Lee and Ms. Goran come up, please.
So as a pre-intro, for people wondering why Councilmember Festerson was chosen to go up there, he was a judge, so if anyone else was a judge, you're welcome to go on up. Councilmember Melton joins.
It was a council family affair.
There you go.
Former and current council members.
Excellent. The floor is yours.
I'd like to introduce Dr. Lee, the Principal from Northwest and also Ms. Jennifer Goran, counselor?
Facilitator.
Facilitator at Northwest. And we're going to present this beautiful trophy right here. And I'd like to say to the council and to our guests that each year, the trophy is called the Social Justice High School Trophy of the Year and our High School of the Year Trophy. And each year, it's different. It's never the same each year. So one year, it's because a school has a lot of just pure talent. Another year, it might be that someone did something so exceptional that you can't, you know, avoid going that route. And in some years, it's maybe the students themselves didn't have a lot of winners, but the school was so impressive. And this year's award goes to Northwest. And Dr. Lee, his school was the first school, the first year and second year, to reach out. And they allowed me to stay there all day, so it was from 7:30 to 4 o'clock. And I was never not busy, so I was doing two classes per hour. And they wore me out, but in a good way, because other schools only allow you to come in after school, after school program. And when I went to all the classes, the teachers themselves were very much social justice oriented. And it changes, Councilman Gray, it changes from building to building. Each building is not the same. But Northwest is really on board with what that message. And so based upon the administration support, teacher support, Ms. Goran's support, no one at Northwest asked me crazy questions like, if I write a song, can I curse in it, you know? No one did that at Northwest, but I did get that at some other schools. So the fact that you run such a top-notch organization and people have an affinity for civil rights, social justice, Martin Luther King. This year's award is given to Northwest and you were able to wrestle it away from Central. And everybody likes doing that. And so...
You're going to have to pry it from his hands. He's a Central pile.
It reads, "Martin Luther King Jr., Social Justice High School of the Year." And as you can see, Northwest is engraved. You keep this trophy until next Christmas, then we come and get it. And then if you happen to win it again, we return it to you. Do you have any words that any one of you would like to say briefly? You don't have to.
Well, I will say that we appreciate the award. We appreciate the opportunity. We appreciate you and the opportunity that you give our young people. We do have great kids. I love kids. I love working with the kids we have. I love Central High School. I was there before I went to Northwest. And so I always kid Dr. Bennett that there's more than one crown jewel and there's more than one school on the hill, because Northwest is on a hill also. And so we're proud of that. Our hill is bigger and better. But we all have great schools all across the metro. It doesn't matter if it's Omaha Public Schools, Millard, Papillion, Bellevue, whatever. We all work together. We love working with young people and we want them to be successful. The opportunity to allow them to display their talents, that is awesome. And we appreciate that you do this event and that you put it on every year. It's an excellent event, only in its second year. And already tremendous, tremendous responses from people, positive responses. So congratulations to all of you and thank you for this opportunity. And on the side note, thank you for Crown Point Project. Boy, I was excited about the meeting this morning and knowing that we're going to get a new street out there. So appreciate that as well. So thank you.
Did you get his name for the record? We might want to get his first name from Franklin. Dr. Lee, what's your first name?
Thomas.
Thomas, thanks. Just asking for the record. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the revised preliminary plat for Millwork Commons located northeast of 14th and Nicholas Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Hi, Katie Underwood with Olson. Address is 2111 South 67th Street. Just here as the civil engineer, this preliminary plat was in front of you guys a few months ago. And we just are updating it to reflect the updated final plat boundary. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Evert Place, replat one, located at 450 South 193rd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of Council, Brent Beller, 1140 West Center Road. This is a replat. You may remember last month, we were in front of you for our final plat. This is the property out on 192nd and Dodge, just south of the Avenue One and our developments. Effectively, what this replat is doing is we're bringing a portion of these lots and this lot into the bounds of our development. So the replat in front of you today is adding these 26 villa lots and then bringing that lot into this Phase Two lot. You may remember there was a conversation about the contribution to 192nd, whether or not we do that. That is a condition on our recommendation report, which we will obviously address as this goes forward. So hopefully there'll be no more issues and we're not hammering anything out in front of you all again. So with that, we're here for your approval and we appreciate your consideration.
That's good to hear. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item seven is approved, seven to zero. Items eight to 10 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Builders District Two, located west of 16th and Burt Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item eight, an ordinance to rezone this property from DS to CBD. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for Builders District Two. Item 10, a resolution to approve the Builders District Two subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items eight through 10 begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yeah. Ted Zetsman, Nala Companies, 2285 South 67th Street in Exarban Village, on behalf of the applicant. The Keywood Headquarters is progressing nicely, as is the other blocks around it in the Builders District. This plat is for the block immediately to the west of the Headquarters Building. I believe that it's one of the two blocks we're going to focus on first for the additional projects in Builders District. I think with the agreement to provide the easement for the bicycle and pedestrian access through the block, I think that we've addressed all of the concerns with the plat and we ask for your approval today. We're here for any questions, as well as our engineer from Lampreinerson.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items eight to 10 are approved, seven to zero. Items 11 to 13 relate to the same project and can be considered together for Alloys Acres, located southeast of 66 and Garvin Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow development in the ED Overlay District. Item 12, a resolution to approve the final plat for Alloys Acres with a waiver to Section 53-99 sidewalks and Section 53-910 streetscape standards. Item 13, a resolution to approve the Alloys Acres subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items 11 through 13 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Don Heiney with Thompson, Dresen and Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road, here on behalf of the applicant. We've worked very hard and long on this project to finally get it to you. We've coordinated closely with the Planning Department, several of the neighbors and even some of the councilmen to get to a plan that we feel is a good plan for the area. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have and ask for your approval of this project.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents?
Hi, my name is Eileen Silatchek. I just want to clarify that I'm not...
Need your address too, Ms. Melton.
6311 Garvin Street.
Thank you.
My husband and our property runs parallel to the addition. We just have a concern, our lane will run parallel to the entrance to this subdivision. And if we could just get some clarification on how that will take place and when that will take place, so we know what happens, that would, that's really all we're asking for.
We'll try to get you some answers.
Thank you.
Are there any other opponents? Do you have any maps on you?
I don't have a map with me, but we do have a roadway that runs parallel with that lane. It'll be adjacent to it, will not disturb that lane. It will be a paved road outside, totally within the property that is being platted here. Their lane will stay as is. There was some conversations about the potential for making a connection between their lane and this new paved road. The developer is still open to making that connection, should they wish to do that.
If you could, if you could put this up on the Elmo and explain what you just said, that I think it would help. And then return that to the clerk, please.
So the lane she is discussing, her property, is over here on the east side of the property. We have a public right of way that is running down here and then turning westerly to connect up to 66th Street. So there is a potential, should they wish to work with us, to provide what is this, their lane is not paved now, but there would be the potential to connect up to this public road and shorten what would be their maintainable road if they wish to do that.
Thank you. And I assume you'll provide your contact information.
I certainly can.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. So Silatchek, does that answer your question for now regarding the lane?
Um, yes, thank you.
Okay, good. I would just comment, Councilman Gray and I have been involved with this for quite some time. As Mr. Heiney noted, it's been a long time in the making and it's actually outside the city, but closest to my district to the north there. And I think the developer and the neighbors have shown a good propensity to work together on some initial concerns about density in lots. And also lighting and sidewalks throughout the discussion, they appear to have a good compromise here today that is supported by the Planning Department. So with those remarks and with clarification on the lane, I'll go ahead and move approval.
No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 11 through 13 are approved, seven to zero. Item 14, an ordinance to rezone property located at 5017 South 134th Street from R2 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 14 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon. Mark Sanford, architect and representative for the applicant. 1306 North 162nd Street, Mark Sanford Group. We're proposing to do a very nice fourplex on this property. It'll be a terrific addition to the very active and vibrant Millard neighborhood.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero.
Thank you very much.
Item 15, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3602, 3604 and 3605 Irksine Street from R535 District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 15 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16, an ordinance to rezone property located at 3916 Miami Street from R435 District to R4 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 16 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC Overlay District to incorporate into that district the property located at 3404 South 119th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 17 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, an ordinance to amend the boundaries of the MCC Overlay District to incorporate into that district the property located at 7340 and 7348 Blondo Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item 18 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Paul Kelly, 440 North 61st Street, I'm the architect here on behalf of the owner.
Thank you.
Project really intent is to combine two driveways and improve the vehicular ingress and egress onto Blondo Street. And if there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Kelly, if you would, thanks for that explanation. Is your name again real quick?
Oh, sorry, Paul Kelly.
Thanks. So that's my understanding of it too. There is just a consolidation of parking in the back of the lot, right?
Yes.
Okay. And no other further development propositions at this time?
No, they've had some storm water issues and we're actually going to, by putting in the driveway, we'll improve it so that it kind of reduces the threat of flooding the existing dental office that's there. But other than that, it's pretty much as shown on the drawings.
Okay, I'm sure they'll appreciate that. And in the meantime, we'll adopt the MCC overlay to it as well, which is a positive, I think, for the area too.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 19, an application to consider a Class C K liquor license for Barnardo located at 225 North 170th Street, Suite 95.
The public hearing on item 19 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, hi, Ethan Bondland, owner of Mavis Social, 6810 Underwood Avenue, and partner of Barnardo, here to answer any questions I might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Item 20, an application to consider a Class C liquor license for 72 Table and Tap located at 5413 South 72nd Street, Suites 101 to 103.
The public hearing on item 20 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Elena Nellens, 5413 South 72nd Street, here for 72 Table and Tap.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 20 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
We had a request to remove item 27 from consent. So is there a motion on 21 through 26 and 28 through 30? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 21 to 30 minus 27 are approved, seven to zero.
Public hearing was already held on this item. Are there any lights? Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. I had asked that this item be taken off and primarily the reason, you know, we had the discussion last week about the language and the way that language appeared in the RFP and the document itself. You know, I just, I just had a problem with the language being rather questionable at this point. And I just didn't feel at this point that I could be, and I asked that it be removed because I have concerns about the way the language was and I would have trouble supporting it. So that's the reason I took it off.
Thank you.
With that, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Melton, oh, excuse me, Festerson, you're next.
Thanks, Mr. President. I was contacted about this also since our last discussion about it. And I think Mr. McBride is here today. I promised I'd give him a chance to talk about it a little bit further as a business in my district, who I think felt, didn't have a full chance to explain his thoughts last time about the language in question. And since that came up and there was no other grounds for appealing the bid, other than this public hearing, so the floor is yours.
Okay. Fred McBride, 1629 Post Drive, Omaha. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the council. To my knowledge, none of the information contained in an RFP is optional. Why would it be there if it wasn't required or information the city wanted to consider in their bids? The RFP, which you have copies of, or I could post it, says that all of the items must be met or your bid will not be entertained. The items in question for the person that's selected to get this award is the only bid participant that didn't meet that requirement. There were six participants. One of them was disqualified as not being certified in the small emerging business program, so they are out of the picture. But for the other five...
They'll turn the light on for you and they will focus it for you.
Thank you.
So if you could just step back to the mic and, or pull one of the mics over if you want to speak about it.
Okay. You'll see down at the bottom, this is on the tabulation document. When Madam Clerk opened these documents, she noted what was, what the contents of the envelopes were. They use the word "submittal requirements" and they have one, two, three items there. Original document, two copies and two electronic copies. To the columns to the right, it says who met those requirements. Again, there were, well, let's see, there were six participants. One of them was not certified a emerging small business, that was Jenny King. So the other, one, two, three, four, five, were eligible to participate. One did not meet all of the requirements and that is the person that's been selected to win this award. We just don't feel that it's fair, under the bidding process, under those circumstances. Why would they ask for it if it wasn't required? When you use the word "required," I mean, and I appreciate the chance to speak, the attorneys parsed on words and commas and that sort of thing. But the original proposal, which I can also show, says that you must meet all of this. And again, why would they put anything on there that's optional? You know, we all believe we have to, in fairness, follow the same rules. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any else? Councilmember Festerson?
Yeah, I mean, I can't, I think there'll be some further questions of other councilmembers here today. I don't know what the outcome will be today, but I did want to give you that opportunity to present that case. And I don't disagree with you that some of that wording is not entirely clear. So, you know, we'll see what happens today, but if nothing else, I hope that we can seek to clarify that wording going forward. And I know you've been a great partner with the city before too, and hopefully we can continue that relationship as they clarify these things in the future.
Right, thank you. And we may not even be the next elected alternative party if this person isn't awarded the contract. It does not appear that we will be, but in fairness of the process.
Yeah.
So we'll be act.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us what the next, what will happen from here?
There was a public hearing on this. Today's the vote. So the council will take action today and if the, if the item is approved, the...
I understand.
It'll proceed to be awarded.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was a vote today. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Melton.
I want to say, we went into this last, last week. I read it and I read both sentences. And there's an initial sentence that said they should submit these items, but, and then they must be submitted by a different, by, by a certain date. The current language as written, when a lawyer looks at it, you would say that it's optional, that it says, it says "should." that it says, it says "should." So I would say my legal interpretation is that BMI can still get awarded this bid. However, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilwoman Gray that you shouldn't have to hire an attorney to interpret any of our RFPs. So I'm asking that the language be changed so that it specifically identifies what is required and what is optional. Because if we intend for something to be optional, I want it to say "required" or "optional," so we're not mincing words, or we don't have to look to see what the latest case law is that's come out from the Supreme Court on their interpretation of "may," "shall," "should," "must," and where it's located. You shouldn't need that, and you shouldn't have to hire an attorney to be able to understand this. So the fact that I'm voting yes on 27, I completely agree that the language should be changed. And I understand your voting principle, saying that it wasn't clear. I also want to thank Mr. McBride, because I want to note that you've made this argument, and you've made it on behalf of all bidders, not necessarily yourself, and recognize, hey, listen, I'm not even the second lowest. Even if you vote no on this, it's not necessarily your company that would be getting the bid. And I just want to say thank you, because you took the time out of your day on behalf of other business owners in the city that are going to be bidding on future contracts, and that takes a lot, and it's citizens like you that actually can make change. And so I'm asking that change be made, no matter what way we vote today, that that's something that will be taken into account, and I hope what we can get either from our legal department or any of the other directors, that they'll, confirmation that those changes will be made in the future. Can you confirm? Okay. I see if the record could reflect that Mr. Kratz is shaking his head yes.
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. We'll work with Public Works on getting the language as you like it.
Okay. I think that would be great. Thank you very much. I have nothing further.
Councilmember Gray.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Again, I think, first of all, I think this was a Parks contract. I don't, yeah, so, and I don't want to reopen the public hearing, but Mr. McGruder, I'll give you about a minute or so to, if you have any remarks that you wanted to make. I know you raised your hand, and again, while I don't want to reopen the public hearing, I do want to give you an opportunity to speak, but, you know, let's keep it short.
I understand, and I appreciate that. Thank you, Councilwoman Gray. And I'll be as brief as I can, okay? Couple of items. And you guys...
Hey, Mr. McGruder, I know we know who you are, and you know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But the record has to reflect who you are, and you have to say it, so if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. McGruder, 1524 Cummins.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, real quick, the language in the custodial RFP for the City of Omaha, that language has been used for the last 10 years, okay? The last decade. And I have 10 years of that language. If you look, if you look at these, this line right there, it'll show you. That's 2019. That's 2018. There's 2017, 2016, 2015, same language, 2014, same language, 2013, 20, what is that, 2012? It's 2012. 2011, and 2010, okay? So this language is not new. It's been used by the City of Omaha in Douglas County for the last decade. As far as the language being ambiguous, it's not ambiguous. It's quite clear. I think all of you have received this, a document that has this document as part of the attachments, and the author, City of Omaha, is very clear on how this, the requirements section, which is this yellow section at the bottom, are to apply to the informational and instructional section, the section up at the top towards the paragraphs in blue, and it's done by the first sentence. Proposals must be received by the date and time of the proposal opening date indicated above, referring you up above to the informational information, okay? So it tells the reader, the vendor, how to apply the language of this document to the informational paragraphs. So if you go down to requirement number three, it's clear that the vendor's proposals must be manually signed in ink, emphasis, in ink, and returned, and returned by the proposal opening date and time, which referring back up to that, the informational information, with any other requirements as specified in the RFP in order to be considered for award. So the bottom line is BMI's bid submittal should have been rejected on its face as noncompliant, didn't comply with the requirements. And this requirement is a must because it refers back up to the informational of what the vendor should submit. But that's part of a paragraph. The second sentence in that paragraph says, "Proposals including CD flash drives must be submitted and received by the City of Omaha's office by the proposal opening time," and they, again, referring back up to the requirements. So why is that so important? It's important because this is an RFP. It's not low bid, not necessarily a low bid. It's best, what's the best for the city. So in that scenario, you're asking the vendors to submit electronic documents because it's going to get distributed to the evaluators. They're not going to send the original proposal. They're going to send the electronic documents. And if you, if you don't enforce the rule strictly that BMI is nonresponsive on his, their proposal is nonresponsive on its face, you open up this procurement system to fraud. Because if I'm a savvy bidder, I'm going to submit a proposal, and I know I can submit my electronic copy a couple of days later, and guess what? My electronic copy may not match my proposal. But my electronic copy is what gets sent to all the evaluators. So how do you make sure that the evaluators are evaluating the proposal that was submitted and opened in public? Got a problem there, okay? So fundamentally, that's my concern, and one other thing is that...
If I can get you to wrap up here.
I'll wrap up.
We're really covering the public hearing again at this point.
I'll wrap up. The bid, the purchasing department's bid tabulation. This is the last bid tab, RFP bid tabulation of 2019. Here's the first RFP bid tabulation of 2020. See the difference? So right now, we've changed a policy. Ms. Councilwoman Gray, you told me one time, you create policies and procedures for a reason. So if you go through all this effort to create a policy and procedure, if you change policy, shouldn't you go through a process to change the policy and not just unilaterally say, oh, don't put that on there next time? Because that's exactly what happened here. So with that, if you need any more information, I have it. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, this reminds me of things happened about five, six years ago. This is one thing I learned from Ernie Chambers, be careful what you put down on paper, because it could come back to haunt you. And I learned that sitting down in the legislature when you had about 15 attorneys there, because they all had a sort of a different interpretation. So we got to be very clear, so when the layperson, myself, looks at it, we have some understanding. So I do appreciate making it clear enough. So as Councilwoman Melton said, that you don't need an attorney to decipher what is it. So I feel uncomfortable with the way it is written, to be honest with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Palermo.
Sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. I remember the discussion on this last week as well, and I guess I just had a question. I remember, well, I sort of remember Director Bench saying that the second, or the next bidder was possibly, we'll say somewhere between $70,000 and $80,000 higher, and that was the savings we would have by going with this bid. So I guess maybe I'll ask Law, if this were to be denied today, because maybe there's estimates and parameters that this bid should be between to be awarded the bid, would, if this was denied today, would it, would it go back out for bid?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney. That'd be up to the department. They could resubmit it to the council sometime in the future, or if they desire, they could put it out for a rebid.
Okay, let me ask Director Bench, then, really putting him on the spot. If this doesn't follow them, do you know what the parameters were on this bid, that if this were denied, it would go back out to bid to maybe all those bidders originally involved?
Brooke Bench, Parks and Recreation. If we had to do that, I would refer to the legal department if that's what their recommendation would be. The savings over the three-year period is $275,000 to our department, so it's a significant amount of money that would, we would save in our budget by choosing BMI. So that was, that was the main driver for us wanting to have that bid, is just due to the fact of the savings that it would save us.
Okay, thank you. Maybe that was per year that it would have saved us then to equal that amount. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights. Oh, Councilmember Harding.
The other side of that question. If this is approved, what remedy would any other bidder have? I think I know the answer, but I'll let you, as an attorney, maybe give your opinion.
Well, let the record reflect. I'm not acting as counsel.
I know, I know that.
That person's behind me, but in...
I'd just like to put you on the spot.
In my view, as a councilmember who happens to be a lawyer, someone with standing could file an action in the District Court of Douglas County. I don't think a non-winning bidder does, but that's not an opinion, that's just comments as a councilmember.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Kratz. City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
Do you agree with what I just said?
Of course I do.
All right. Mark your calendars.
You are correct. There'd be, could file an injunction action in District Court. That's, I don't think I've ever seen that happen in the 20 years I've been here, but that would be a possible route.
Thank you. What's the will of the council? No further lights, roll call.
Palermo.
No.
Festerson.
No.
Gray.
No.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
No.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 27 failed, three to four.
Public hearings on agenda items 31 through 65 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent.
Hi.
Welcome, Ms. Feistinger.
Well, you know, I'm here. I would like to address item number 65.
You may proceed.
You got my address as well, so everyone knows where I live.
Yes, please.
2719 North 49th Avenue. The Property Maintenance Appeals Board was created after the consent decree in 2015, I believe, the landlords', and it was a way for the landlords and for citizens to address their needs if they felt the city wasn't treating them fairly in code enforcement. I've been following the board for a long time. I know Councilwoman Gray has joined me, had a few meetings up in the Jesse Low Conference Room. They're fun. I would encourage you to join. I do want to point out that there are currently three vacancies on the board. This is filling one of them. The other two vacancies are the required tenant representatives, and one of the tenant representatives is supposed to come from Councilwoman Gray's district, which has the most code violations in the city, and that vacancy has been open since September of 2018, I believe. So I just wanted to point that out and hope that we're making some progress in filling that position, because it's crucially important that we have tenant representation on that board. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And I would encourage anyone who knows of a potential tenant who's interested to forward the name to Councilmember Gray or directly to the mayor's office for consideration. Councilmember Gray, you're right. Are there any more proponents or opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilmember Gray.
Just very briefly, Mr. President. We, I do have a couple of names that we're going to be looking at, but I certainly would agree with our president that if you have any other names, please make sure you get them to me, and we'll try, we'll get that expedited as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a motion? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items 31 through 65 were approved, seven to zero. Item 66, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on those lots and pieces of real estate within the Benson Business Improvement District, number 6875, Group 6875-20. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Is there a motion on the amendment as a whole? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 66 amendment is approved, seven to zero. Item 67, ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on those lots and pieces of real estate within the Dundee Business Improvement District, number 6876, Group 6876-20. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment for item 67 is approved, seven to zero. Item 68, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for cutting and clearing weeds, grass, and worthless vegetation, Group 2020-01. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton. Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Amendment for item 68 is approved, seven to zero. Item 69, an ordinance levying a special tax assessment for litter removal, Group 2020-02. A is an amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Amendment for item 68 is approved, seven to zero. Item 70, a resolution to approve the reimbursement of $34,000 to Landmark Management Group for the fair market value paid for and the cancellation of the vacation of B Street, generally west of 28th Street.
The public hearing was held previously. Councilmember Vice President Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And on this item, we laid it over because there were some questions, especially with the ones I have, serving on the Vacations Committee, which is actually a committee within the Public Works Committee with Councilmember Festerson and Councilmember, do I have to save it, my favorite, Pauls? Okay, sorry.
I forgot his name.
No, sorry. So back to business. I had some questions, and I want to thank those within Public Works from Director Stube and also James Thompson for the explanation of how this works, who sits on the various committees who come up with this, and the hard work that goes into this to making this happen. So with that, I'll motion to approve.
I'll second that, the second the second, I guess now. But just for those who don't know, there were some on the council that wanted to make sure that the applicant who had requested the vacation in the city alley, who had caused the city to incur time, effort, and expense to process that, has refunded to the city from this refund they're getting, the application fee, the administrative fee, and the appraisal fee. Is that correct, Mr. Stube?
Bob Stube, probably works that is correct. There's three components to that.
Thank you. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 70 is approved, seven to zero. Item 71, a resolution to approve the Second Amendment to the Agreement with First Star Fiber, Inc., for the Omaha Mixed Recyclables Processing 2016 to 2021 Project.
The public hearing on item 71 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember Festerson.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Tyler, if you could come down just for a moment? I'm supportive of this today, and obviously this is something we've been working on for quite some time to make sure that our recycling processing continues in 2020, even as we look towards the bigger picture in the future. Just a couple of questions, I'll engage you on. Why don't you identify yourself?
Jim Tyler, City of Omaha, Public Works.
So one thing it calls out is that in this agreement, it does pay and process materials differently that are dry versus wet. And I think in practice today, that is what happens anyway, but I think this is the first time it's really delineated in terms of differences in price for that material and what happens to that material if it's wet. Do you want to address that?
Yeah, so, you know, actually in practice, in prior contracts, because we weren't paying for this, we didn't have any differential pay for this. In working with First Star Fiber in trying to secure the, this year's processing, there, we noted that because of our open bins and we don't have the carted system yet, that they do require a lot of extra effort to process those wet materials. So we agreed to a higher price for that processing that is over and above what they charge for the normal dry weather material and what they charge to other customers for that material.
And hopefully that's not an issue going forward, as you say, because soon we'll have carts that cover the materials, and so all recycled materials would be then actually recycled and processed because they'd be dry, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And we do also, I'll take this time to put in a little plug here, but we'd like to get out some public information to our residents, and I'll work with the proper communications to do that, to help our residents know how to better handle these materials on wet days, maybe keep them inside, maybe put them out the next week, maybe here's some materials that you shouldn't set out. So we'll work on communications for this year to help, so not so much wet material goes to First Star.
I think that'd be good. And I think folks may not realize, but in the current green bin system, when that material does get wet, that material, if contaminated, does go to landfill presently, doesn't it?
Yeah, and Mike Bachman's here from First Star, and he may be able to answer that better than I. I can't say it'll go to the landfill. I can say that it does make the processing slower, and some of it, not all of it, is able to be recycled. Now let Mike answer that question.
Sure.
Mike, you have to tell us your name and address.
Mike Bachman, First Star Fiber, 10330 I Street.
Thank you.
Not all the wet material does go to the landfill. We're able to, it does slow down our process tremendously. We're able to sort out what we can out of it. Some of it does go to the landfill, but we try to recover as most of it we can.
Good. I wanted to make that point because that is what's happened, what happens currently, and it's just kind of called out for the first time in this year-long contract, but the good news is we're addressing that in the future by not having wet material with our carts, and I think that's a positive to that new recycling contract. And then lastly, within this agreement, First Star Fiber also agrees to maintain the drop-off sites for one more year until FCC then presumably takes over, which is consistent with our conversation during our last meeting. So during that period of time, should we have concerns about those sites or the materials that are being dropped off there, we can still contract, or contact First Star Fiber directly and get those addressed, right?
Yeah, and actually contacting the city directly, we're going to try to be a little more proactive in the management of those sites, both on the city side and with First Star, and we've talked to the police precinct about this, and so we're going to try to be a little more proactive, help the residents know that it's an offense if they're littering on these sites, and so we're hoping that will help address some of the things. But if there are problems there, first contact will go to the city, we'll send out an inspector, and we'll find out what the problem is and take care of it accordingly.
Okay. And lastly, this agreement does fit within what you've budgeted for this year in terms of your expectations of cost, right?
The agreement that we came up with, the budgetary amounts were discussed with finance, and they've been notified of the dollar amounts.
Okay. And I shouldn't say budgeted because it wasn't budgeted, but you feel confident it can be covered?
I feel confident that the numbers that we provided to the finance department will stay within those numbers, yes.
Thank you. I think there's some additional lights on, but I'll go ahead and move approval.
Councilmember Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. First of all, Jim, that was a very good answer. Secondly, could you just, I know it's in the contract, but because there is a rather large difference between the wet amount and the dry amount, if you will, of about $36, I think it is, knowing that it says if it rains a quarter of an inch, according to what falls at Epley Airfield, and it just went, I know it's spelled out in the contract, but if you could just, for the record, discuss how that's actually monitored?
Sure, sure. So we're not trying to identify every load of what material goes to First Star. We tried to come up with a fair form of compensation to First Star. So statistically, we looked at the statistics from Epley Airfield, that's going to happen about 10% of the time in a normal year, and we worked with First Star, and we've agreed to, you know, let's, this is going to be a fair compensation on this. And if you look at the difference between a normal day's tonnage that goes to First Star and the additional cost of about $33 per ton, because the normal cost is 110, the wet material cost is 143, it's about $2,000 for a day. So we're thinking that over the course of the year, the additional wet material should cost $60,000, somewhere in that range, payment from the city to First Star, and that's just based on normal precipitation.
Okay. And just one further clarification, if you will, it says .25 precipitation gauge that equals .25 or greater. What if that's a snow? Is there...
So they take the snowfall, they get an equivalent precipitation rate, and so we get the information straight from the National Weather Service.
All right. That wasn't, I wasn't sure of that because it wasn't really spelled out that way in the contract, but I'm glad to hear that on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, roll call.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 71 is approved, seven to zero. Item 72, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing redevelopment agreement for the Benson Apartments Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 6152 Military Avenue in an amount up to $2,67,135. A is a request from the applicant to move the third reading to the February 11, 2020 meeting, and to continue the public hearing to that date.
We will open up this item for public hearing because it's advertised, so if there's anyone who came today intending to speak on this item, you may, but please be advised that we intend to have a motion to, at the request of the applicant, move the third reading to February 11 and continue the public hearing. Seeing no one?
Motion to delay it until February 11 and continue the public hearing. Second.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven to zero. Item 73, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing redevelopment agreement for the Hub 1401 Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1401 Jones Street in an amount up to $836,191.
The public hearing on item 73 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes. Good afternoon, Don Satan, Omaha City Planning. I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good afternoon. Jay Klein, 10404 Essex Court. I represent the developer White Lotus Group, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 74, an ordinance to approve a professional services agreement with Patrick Rowland in the amount of $27,000, and to authorize funding for such agreement from the City of Omaha's Fiscal Year 2018 Violent Gang and Gun Crime Reduction Grant Program.
The public hearing on item 74 begins at this time. Are there any proponents or opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Item 75, an ordinance to increase liquid volume to an existing Class B flammable liquid storage district to a Class A flammable liquid storage district to be known as District Number A 158, located at 2550 East Locust Street, as requested by the Omaha Airport Authority.
The public hearing on item 75 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Ron Ferbach, Morrissey Engineering, 44 North 118th Street. Just here if you have any questions.
Ron, would you spell your last name for the clerk, please?
Yes, it's F-E-U-E-R-B-A-C-H.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
If there are no objections, we'll move the supplement resolution up before the non-action items.
Without objection. So ordered.
Item 105, a resolution to approve the contract with M.E. Collins Contracting Company, Inc., in the amount of $95,515 for the Omaha Traffic Maintenance Facility Storm Sewer Project.
The public hearing on item 105 begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? The public hearing is closed.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 105 is approved, seven to zero. Non-action items, items 76 through 103 do not require a public hearing or City Council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and/or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date. The item is expected to appear on an agenda for consideration.
Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Festerson.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Mr. President.